Thank you. It would be appropriate now to call for a motion to appoint John Anthony, President Pro Tem, for this meeting only. Is there a motion?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Anne Marie Graham Hudek, and supported by Treasurer Diane Slavens. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, the ayes have it. I will now turn it over to Mr. Anthony.
Okay. Supervisor Williams is out of town today, and being the senior member of the board, assumed his responsibilities, so bear with me if I screw up. Did I jiggle down there?
No, it was summer.
Better not.
It was running a tight show.
It was summer.
Guy with a mallet.
Is his mic on, Michael?
We need to adopt the agenda.
Do you want to call the roll first?
Oh, we want to, yeah, we need to call the roll.
All right. Let's see. President Pro Tem, Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Hello.
Trustee Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
The record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I'm here tonight.
And finally Supervisor Williams, absent.
Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
Mr. President Pro Temore, I move that the Board adopt the agenda with the modification of removing item C1, the second reading of the addition of Chapter 2, Article 5, to the Canton Township Code of Ordinance, is entitled Code of Ethics, Sections 2-225 through 2-251, and item G1, the Consider Approval of a Five-Year Agreement with Wayne County Appraisal LLC, DBA, WCA Assessing, for Municipal Assessing Services for Canton Township.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now's the time for approval of the minutes from, we can do this in one motion. We're going to ask for approval of the minutes from April 10th, 17th, and 22nd, and April 1st, all of this year.
Support. Oh, still moved, sorry.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now's the time for citizens' non-agenda item comments, or any public comments. George?
I'd like to know what we can do about speeding up this pothole situation. I travel these roads quite a bit, most every week. Geddes Road in Canton Center, that intersection's quite bad, and all the way out to Ridge Road to Geddes. That hasn't been touched in three or four weeks. I've been traveling it two or three times a week. Same potholes. Sheldon Road, Cherry Hill, to Ford Road, the same thing. Lots Road from Palmer to Cherry Hill, down near by the creek, there's been overflowed, there's a big pothole there. Sheldon Road to Van Born, that hasn't been touched. I'd like to know, I'd like to touch what we can do about this summit. The hours on that one, there was a power outage for senior citizens to stay, if they have somewhere to stay overnight, maybe. Even if they have to sit in a chair and sleep over there, they had nowhere to go. Since we're taxpayers of it, and if there was a big catastrophe in this township, maybe that could be opened up for that. I'd like to know what we can do for an improvement on that. I'd like to know next week. Same way with the bonds. I asked Mrs. Slavens, and I brought it up here at many meetings, the bonds from around '78 to '86. Sheldon Road was paved, they floated bonds, Canton did. Sheldon Road was that same way, from Michigan to Cherry Hill that I know of. Palmer was from Canton Center all the way to Hagerty. Canton floated bonds for it. There should be a paper trail on the stocks when it went up the market. I'd like that. If I have to fill out a foyer, I'd be more than glad to do it. Maybe we can have it next week. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Any other public comments? Anyone else would like to make any comment? Now we move to the payment of the bills.
President Pro Tem, I move that we pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have two presentations this evening. The first one is the Senior Alliance Update. Don't wreck the place.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Canton Board of Trustees and everyone in attendance. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I know you have a busy agenda, so I promise I'll keep my report brief. My name is David Wilson. I'm the Business Development Manager with the Senior Alliance. We're more commonly known sometimes as the Area Agency on Aging 1C. 1C is our service designation of the 34 communities of Southern and Western Wayne County. Each year, we visit all of our municipalities and report on the activities of our agency over the past year, and we consider you to be one of our fiduciaries. I've left reports for you that'll show the services and the dollar amounts that were utilized for the residents of Canton last year, and you'll see that the township's match was $6,109 for fiscal year '17. We thank you for that support, and we look forward to working with your residents over the course of the next year and beyond. One of the things I want to touch on real quick is, our agency operates on a budget of almost $30 million. We're very proud of the fact that only 4% to 5% of that is used for administrative costs. The rest of that, the 95% of those dollars, go directly back into the services that we provide in the residents of our communities. In the past 10 years, our audits have had no findings, there's been no citations or financial penalties. And if you'll look now at your reports, you'll see a breakdown of those services that I mentioned. Last year, 631 residents of Canton, mostly seniors, were served through our agency. 330 of those were provided assistance through our Information and Assistance Department. Now, this is a service that we provide for persons who aren't sure what to do, they need to help with a particular problem, they don't know who to talk to, they'll call up our agency at our general line, they'll speak to a certified heirs counselor, who will be able to assist them, hopefully, by directing them to one of the community partners that we work with through our ADRC network. We do have a fleet of transportation vehicles. Luckily, that wasn't as needed in Canton as in other municipalities, because it is a service that we are trying to expand but has limited resources right now. But you'll see that there were six rides provided last year. 148 residents of Canton were served in our in-home programs. Our in-home programs can include the Medicaid waiver program, commonly known as My Choice. Now, this is a really great program, because what it does is it takes Medicaid dollars that are being utilized for persons to reside in a skilled nursing facility, and it takes that same money and helps the person get those services that they need in their homes. This can include personal care, homemaking, chore services, personal emergency response systems, transportation, and that's Medicaid dollars, and it saves the state millions annually. We also operate a nursing facility transition program, which, when you have persons who are for otherwise stuck in a skilled nursing facility, we help them transition back into the community, get them set up with their furniture, their first month's rent, maybe, groceries, whatever they're going to need to get back in the community. See, the philosophy of our organization is that we believe in person-centered care, and we believe in making sure persons receive the care that they need in their own homes and communities versus in an institution. We have a care coordination department that works with persons who are 60 and older. Those services are funded directly with the Older Americans Act dollars. 147 residents in Canton were provided nutritional services. Now, this is going to be most commonly known as Meals on Wheels. So this can include a home-delivered meal, this could include a congregate meal if they were to go to a site every day and get lunch. We also operate a holiday meals program that is privately funded, so that on Easter, Christmas, and Thanksgiving, because Meals on Wheels doesn't operate, our agency relies on donations from the public and volunteers to deliver those meals. Between Thanksgiving and Christmas last year, we provided 3,300-plus meals across our service area. We're really proud of that, because that was really twice as many as we had as the year before. Another program I want to touch on real briefly is our Medicare/Medicaid Assistance Program. It was formerly known as MAP, now it's commonly known as SHIP. This is a terrific program, because it relies on volunteers, usually retirees who want to give back to the community, go through a lot of training, then become certified as counselors to help people through their Medicare enrollment and ongoing issues that they might have afterward. Now, the great thing about this program is it also helps to combat fraud. Last year, we worked with 6,649 individuals across our entire service area for that program, and we saved the federal government $1.6 million in Medicare spending. We do do a lot of outreach. You may notice we have a new logo that we implemented last year. A couple of years ago, we purchased a property from the county, that's a 33-acre campus, and we moved our entire operations there. You'll find that off of Noe Road, just north of Van Born. If you're ever looking for a chance to come out and visit, I'd be happy to give you a tour. It's a beautiful piece of property, especially right now. It's got walking trails and ponds, a barn, greenhouses. We're actively pursuing plans to develop that over the next 10 years, so that we can provide terrific services to residents of all of our communities. We're also doing a lot more outreach. We recently joined the Canton Chamber, which, we were at the Safari Event last week, that was a great event. We're participating more in health fairs and senior expos, so if there's anything the city has coming up, please let us know. And I also want to briefly mention that there is a Meals on Wheels fundraiser that's being hosted by the county. This is a joint effort between ourselves, the county, and Detroit Area Agency on Aging. That's going to be on May 21st at Maddox Severley. It's called Wheels for Meals, and you can find more information on our website at thesenioralliance.org or on our Facebook page. And if anybody has any questions, I'm more than happily to hopefully answer them for you.
I have a real quick question. Thank you for all you do. I know I've been to the Capitol Day, which is wonderful. We have a list of folks in the area that do small jobs for seniors, like shoveling and mowing and that. I don't know if there's any way I could get an updated list of that, because often in my office, we have folks coming in to pay their water taxes, and they're asking for names of somebody locally. And I know we had a list, but it's an older list?
Yeah, we don't, we aren't updating that list anymore, just because we don't want to falsely vouch for an organization. But what we can provide publicly is a list of contractors that we are contracted with. So if anybody wants to go to our website, they can see a full list of our service providers. And those are contractors that go through some pretty stringent application processes. I know that for a fact, because I used to have to review them at a former job. So I can say that that's available to the public, and there are chore providers on that list.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
You were talking about the Medicaid waiver program, so that is only to keep people in their homes. That's basically only for people who can somewhat care for themselves, correct? So it wouldn't be someone who would need someone there 24 hours?
There are occasions where a person might need 24-hour care. The basic rule is that if a person is in a skilled nursing facility and it's being provided with Medicaid dollars, I don't want to say always, but 99.9% of the time, they're eligible for the Medicaid waiver program or the PACE program.
So that would pay for, so if they're in the skilled nursing, because they have to be watched all night, they can also have somebody at their house, and it would be the same amount? They wouldn't have any out-of-pocket?
It depends on their situation. Everybody's got a particular situation with their financial income and their needs, so everybody has to go through an assessment with a nurse and social worker before we can determine the level of care that they would be authorized for. But there have been cases, yes, where they've had live-in care.
What about if, you know, somebody might fall, and then they would need a wheelchair? Are there funds to help them make their home wheelchair accessible, like widening doorways or something like that?
There are times, yes, but it also depends on the financial situation. So if there's any situation where a person might need something like that, the best advice is to call our agency's general line, speak to an INA specialist, and then they'll be able to route them either to somebody within our organization that can go through a phone screen with them, or connect them to one of our partners that we work with.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board comments?
Great, thank you.
I sit on the Senior Alliance Advisory Committee, and it's been an eye-opener. I've been on there just about three years. It's amazing the number of outlook programs you all have, and how you can help people, the seniors in our community who are really in need of these various services. It's a one-stop-shopping experience, and you do a hell of a job with the Meals on Wheels. I know that program suits them. It's always looking for more funds, more volunteers. Is that, there were more people that needed, the need than there was the service? Is it still that way?
Well, we work with the county to provide the Meals on Wheels directly, but we're happy to report that right now, there's not a waiting list in our service area. Now, there was, there may be a waiting list in other areas around Southeast Michigan, but in the service area we provide with the county right now, there is not. So that's, yes, that's a good improvement. And thank you for serving on our advisory board, so thank you very much.
Well, you do, the organization does a heck of a job, and we appreciate your coming out tonight and giving us an update. We look forward to seeing you next year.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Now we have, moving on, quarterly investment report. Diane?
And I passed out to everybody the quarterly investment report. It's something you were going to be doing. If you have any questions, please ask me. I have a list of the comparison by month of the funds, broken down by where the dollars are at, and the composition on the lower level. You can see where, what areas we, what percent we have our investment in. And then on the back page would be the fund names, where they're at, and how much monies we have, whether it's in a CD or liquid investments.
Thank you, Diane. We're going to move on to the consent calendar, which the clerk will read in one resolution. One motion, excuse me.
Correct. All right. Mr. President Pro Tem, I move that the Board adopt the consent calendar as modified. Item C2, Appointment to the Commission for Culture, Arts, and Heritage of Virginia Thorne Herman. And item C3, Consider Authorization of Permit of 2018 Liberty Fest Fireworks Display.
All in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
I seconded it, but it was, my mic was off.
I heard you.
Okay, thanks.
I can see you're going to be a problem tonight.
You want me to go, just say the word.
Thanks.
Nice night out.
Question about the presentation? We kind of went through it really quickly, sorry.
Go, go, go.
So just Diane, on the, how do you decide, then, how often do they look to change the allocations of the funding that you have there? I mean, is it done monthly, or how do they decide?
Well, every month, we, I mean, we do a quarter, I'll do a quarterly report to you, but every month, we look over what, the investments. And some of them are in longer term, you know, some of them are in three-year CDs. Okay?
Monthly meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Diane, it looks like a healthy list of low-risk investments. Do you know, are there regulations and guidelines for communities like ours?
Well, everybody throughout the state, you have, we have regulations we have to follow.
No, can't invest in stocks or Bitcoin or anything like that, so, okay.
Bitcoin's doing well. I don't know. Is there a target that we want to hit every year, every month, or that we want to stay under or stay at?
We just want, we want to make sure that we're investing safely, you know, because these are dollars, and we want to make sure we're investing safely.
All right, let's move on to the general calendar, and we'll go through these item by item. Agenda item G2, G1 was removed from the calendar. Consider Approval of Resolution to Make a Donation to the Michigan Townships Association to Provide Financial Assistance Towards the Defense of the Ruling in the Menard, Inc. vs. the City of Escanaba.
President Pro Tem, I move to approve the resolution to help defray legal costs in Menard Incorporated v. City of Escanaba Dark Store litigation by making a donation to the Michigan Townships Association and authorize a payment of $5,000 be forwarded to the Michigan Townships Association. And I will read the draft resolution. Whereas Article 9, Section 3 of the Michigan Constitution requires uniformity of taxation, and whereas there is a case before the Michigan Tax Tribunal, Menard Incorporated v. City of Escanaba, that may determine a method of equitable valuation of a wide variety of commercial and large industrial facilities, especially corporate headquarters and unique properties found in many townships, and whereas this case is on remand before the Tax Tribunal following a favorable ruling from the Court of Appeals regarding valuation methodology, and now has the potential to correct numerous prior rulings that resulted in erroneous low-values of property and reduced revenues in communities across Michigan, and whereas exceptionally high costs have been incurred by the City of Escanaba in excess of funds available from its property tax administration fee to achieve an outcome from which many more communities, including the Canton Township, will also benefit, and whereas MCL 211.44, Section 3, provides in part, "The cost of any appeals in excess of funds available from the property tax administration fee may be shared by any taxing unit only if approved by the governing body of the taxing unit," and whereas the city is anticipated to incur costs far in excess of funds available from its property tax administration fee, and whereas the Canton Township Board of Trustees desires to help defray the cost of litigation and legal representation incurred by the City of Escanaba to ensure that the city has adequate resources to provide to the tribunal a competent and compelling defense of its valuation determinations in Menard Incorporated v. City of Escanaba. Now therefore be it resolved that the Canton Township Board of Trustees authorizes a payment of $5,000 to the Michigan Townships Association to provide financial assistance toward the continued defense of the ruling in Menard Incorporated v. City of Escanaba.
Second, oh, go ahead.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Item G3, Consider Award of a Purchase Order Contract to the Spalding De Decker, Inc., for Completion of a Phaser Study of County and Private Roads.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. President Pro Tem, I move to approve a purchase order contracting with Spalding De Decker Incorporated for completion of the 2018 Pacer Study of County and Private Roads in the Township and development of a Roadsoft Pavement Management Model for an amount not to exceed $25,190 under the existing master services agreement.
Engineering Services recently solicited proposals for conducting a pavement surface evaluation rating, known as Phaser, study of the county and private roads across the township. Phaser ratings are necessary to determine the repair and maintenance strategy for future improvements. The request for proposal also included development of a model of the roads of the township utilizing Roadsoft to analyze pavement management strategies for the township moving forward. Two firms submitted responses, and the staff has recommended retaining Spalding De Decker, Inc., for this contract in the amount of $25,190. Any board comment?
I have a question. If we approve this proposal, how long will it take to complete the Pacer study, once they get started?
That's included in their proposal.
Okay.
You can see the dates on there. The complete study will be done by March, third week of June.
Okay.
Very fast-paced. They'll probably start it tomorrow, if approved.
I have a question about the $2,100 for private roads. One, this is, just want to make sure that this is okay, given the Department of Treasury's regulations about not spending resources maintaining private roads, and also, just curious about what the goal of including a Pacer rating for private roads would be. I noticed that Director of Municipal Services, Tim Foss, is not here, but...
I posed the question to Corporation Counsel, because I mirrored those same concerns, and she thought there was some leeway to be able to do that, but I shared the same concerns that you did.
Right. And I understand it's only $2,100, which is less than the contingency, so perhaps it's immaterial to some degree, but we have maintained special assessment districts for private roads, right? We've done that in the past?
And help with the financing of that, but they, we cannot back the interest payments on that. So when we go to issue debt for private roads, those debt, that debt is always sold at a higher interest rate than the public roads are. So there's different legal requirements. We cannot spend a dime on private road paving and maintenance. We legally cannot do that. So there's a higher fee, because it's not our roads when we issue debt in their name.
Any other board comment?
Yes, can I ask, how many roads do we get completed in 2017?
The only roads I know that were done were completed by Wayne County, and those are primary roads.
Because there's a cost here for 2017, what was that cost for, then? So in 2017, okay, so, okay, I'm sorry. So the firm, the price is $22,900, but then we're being asked to pay an amount of $25,190, so it's different. What's the difference between what's in the executive summary and what's shown under background information?
The contingency included in that.
Typically, there's a 10% contingency added to the...
Okay, so are we sure, then, we can do the private roads, or should we approve this with the contingency that we can? Can we do that, then, just say, just to verify with legal counsel again, or we think we've got legal counsel?
Well, she said she had talked to the Corporation Counsel and that that was okay.
All right, thanks.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda item G5, Consider Approval of a Budget Amendment and Award of Purchase Order Contracts to Roofing Technologies Associates and Skina Roofing for Roof Repairs and Maintenance to the Canton Public Works Facility. There's two motions on this one.
There are. We did skip G4, but we can get back to it afterwards. Okay. Mr. President Pro Tem, I move to approve the following budget amendment. Increase expenses to the water maintenance and repair of buildings account for $9,500, and the sewer maintenance and repair of buildings account for $9,500, and an offset of a decrease in expense to the transfer to fund balance of $19,000.
Support.
As part of Canton Township's effort to effectively manage and maintain its facilities, a study was completed to assess the roof conditions of all facilities. In order to maintain roofs properly and extend the life as long as possible, the study recommended various preventative maintenance activities at the public works facility. The cost obtained by facilities maintenance to perform the project management, quality control, and monitoring is $4,200 by Roofing Technologies Associates. In addition, in addition to the cost to make some repairs to the main facility and cold storage facility is $14,000 by Skina Roofing. A budget amendment is necessary, however, was accounted for in the 2018 water and sewer rates recently approved by the Board. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
You've got two motions.
Correct. Mr. President Pro Temore, I move that the Board award a purchase order contract to Roofing Technologies Associates for an amount not to exceed $4,200, and a purchase order to Skina Roofing for an amount not to exceed $14,800 for necessary repairs, maintenance to the public works facility roof.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have a second motion?
Well, we skipped G4.
Is this G4 here? Here it is.
It was 5.
We skipped G4.
Oh, 4. I lost 4.
All right. So we're good, if you want to go to G4 now.
Let's go back. Let's go back, let's finish up on 5, then we go back to 4.
So we just did 5.
Yeah. I thought we did 5.
Yeah, that's done. We just left G4 now.
Do this one. Item G4, "Consider Approval of a Budget Amendment and Award of a Purchase Order Contract to MTech for the Purchase of a Gap Vax Combination Sewer Cleaning Truck."
Mr. President Pro Tem, I move to approve the following budget amendment. Increase expense to the capital outlay vehicles account for $450,000, and a decrease expense to the transfer to fund balance of $450,000.
Our public work staff cleans and inspects the township 360 miles of sanitary sewer on a five-year continuing cycle. In order to provide the necessary level of service, several sewer cleaning trucks are necessary. Our 1995 Vector unit has exceeded its serviceable life and is due for replacement. The truck is to be purchased using the Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Contract. This contract was competitively bid a few years ago and extends pricing through December 31 of this year. The cost of the purchase is $449,989 with the options as specified. A budget amendment is necessary, however, was accounted for in the 2018 water and sewer rates recently adopted by the board. You have a motion?
Yep. Motion.
Quick question, though. Just, I know it's an old truck. Is that 33 years? Is that about the lifespan of it? I know those trucks are...
Typically try to get 20 to 25 years.
Okay, so wow, very good. Very good, thanks.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I further move to award a purchase order contract to MTech for an amount not to exceed $450,000 for the purchase of a Gap Vax Combination Sewer Cleaning Unit using the Oakland County Cooperative Contract.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Diane.
Opposed? Same sign. Now we're going to move on to item G6, and there are two motions here for this one. "Consider Approval of a Budget Amendment and Award of a Purchase Order Contract to Utility Instrumentation Services for Electrical Preventative Maintenance at the Canton Public Works Facility."
Mr. President Pro Tem, I move to approve the following budget amendment. Increase expense to water maintenance and repair of buildings account of $5,500, and an increase expense to the sewer maintenance and repair of buildings account for $5,500, and a decrease expense in the transfer of fund balance of $4,000.
As part of Canton Township's effort to effectively manage and maintain its facilities, Utility Instrumentation Services conducted an electrical inventory audit with a goal to later assess the condition of all facilities. In order to maintain electrical systems properly and extend the life as long as possible, it is recommended that various preventative maintenance activities be performed by the public works facility. The cost obtained by facility maintenance to perform this work is $10,974 as part of a larger project for several facilities. A budget amendment is necessary, however, was accounted for in the 2018 water and sewer rates recently approved by the board. Any board comment?
Director Trumbull, these budget amendments from the water and sewer rates, so the money was in the water fund, or they're in this water maintenance and repair fund?
What happened was when we were setting the water rates, we sit down and have meetings with municipal services and talk about the capital that was budgeted to see if we still were planning on spending all the money that was budgeted, or if we were planning on spending more, because we don't want to charge more water rates if plans had changed and they weren't doing the capital, or if we needed to do more, we wanted to make sure we built that into the rate. So these items had not been budgeted initially, but we put them, added them into the cost cash needed basically to, for the upcoming year, so we could fund it. So we put those into the total expenses when calculating how much cash we needed to collect.
So they were included in the water rates we just set?
Correct.
Okay, so even though we went down, it was still included in there, but it wasn't in the budget that we set for this year?
Correct. It was not in the approved budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board comment?
Would that be, that must be due to comment, or due to comment, sorry. That must be due to timing, right? Because we approved the budgets back in the fall, and then we set the water rates in the spring, so...
Correct. And when you think about it, the budget was actually initially prepared two years before that. So sometimes things get missed in the budget. They forget that they were planning, you know, upcoming projects need to be done. It's kind of normal. So that's why when we get to the actual rate-setting time, we have another meeting just to verify all these expenses are still good expenses before setting the water rates for the upcoming year.
Does this risk putting us over budget for the year? The last one was a pretty hefty item.
Putting us over budget?
Yeah, because it wasn't in the 18 budget. It was in the water rates.
Guys, approve it, it will be in the budget.
Okay.
State law doesn't actually require the board to approve a budget for enterprise funds anyways. We do it. So at the end of the year, if we were over budget in an enterprise fund, the township would not be in trouble for violating the Budget Act, if you will. They wouldn't be in violation of it, but we operate similarly for the enterprise fund as every other fund in the township.
Definition of an enterprise fund?
Anything that you charge a user fee to collect your revenue.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I further move to approve a purchase order contract to Utilities Instrumentation Services, UIS, for an amount not to exceed $11,000 for necessary maintenance and repairs to the DPW facility electrical system.
Any board comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item G6, "Consider Award of a Purchase Order Contract to Trail Boss Trailers, Inc. for the Purchase of a 20-ton Tag-Along Tilt-Top Equipment Trailer."
Allow me one moment to find my motion. Mr. President Pro Tem, I move to award a purchase order contract to Trail Boss Trailers, Incorporated of 15722 U.S. Highway 45, Macon, Mississippi, 39341, for the purchase of a 20-ton Tag-Along Tilt-Top Trailer for an amount not to exceed $24,875.
Support.
To perform the daily tasks and services provided by Public Works, heavy construction equipment is necessary. In order to safely transport our excavators, backhoes, loaders, and other heavy equipment, Tag-Along Tilt-Top Equipment Trailers are necessary. These trailers are regulated by the Michigan Department of Transportation and require strict upkeep. Canton currently owns two of these units, however. Due to the increased workload and additional equipment at Public Works, a third has been necessary for some time. Public Works received two bids on the requested unit on March 29 of this year. Trail Boss Trailers, Inc. was the lowest responsible bid at the amount of $24,875. Any board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item G8, "Consider Approval of Bid Award for General Paving Rehabilitation."
Mr. President Pro Tem, I move to award the bid and the contract for the general paving rehabilitation projects to S&amp;J Asphalt Company at 39571 Michigan Avenue here in Canton, Michigan, 48188, for $97,960 with funds to be paid from the account number for capital outlay buildings and improvements listed.
Support.
In March of this year, bids were solicited for general paving rehabilitation for small pavement restoration projects throughout the township properties. The lowest qualified bid was provided by S&amp;J Asphalt Paving Company in the amount of $130,500, which was over the proposed budget of $100,000, of which $2,040 has been used for engineering consulting services on this project. The scope of the project was negotiated to include less miscellaneous paving repairs. With that amendment, S&amp;J Asphalt Paving has agreed to the new total of $97,960. Any board comments?
So what would be the miscellaneous that they're not going to do now, that they brought the bid down?
We just wouldn't do as much seal coating or crack filling. Basically, what we did, historically, we, Municipal Services has been responsible for replacing parking lots, drives, whenever there's been issues with that, and then Maintenance Division, which is now part of Leisure Services, has patched together some funds to do potholes, basically, when they came up, or any random repairs that needed to be done, but we have not historically had a maintenance program to do seal coating and potholes and that sort of thing. So this year is the first time that we budgeted dollars to follow up a couple of years, probably two to three years after a parking lot gets replaced, we will follow up behind that to do the seal coating to prolong the life. Seal coating, restriping, anything that needs to be done to prolong the life. So this is just the first step in that. So it'll just be, we won't do as much of a scope, but we're starting to be able to do those preventative maintenance items.
I noticed there's a substantial pothole in front of public safety. Would that be included in this work?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Amendment passes. Item G9, "Consider Approval of Bid Award for Summit Gym Floor Resurfacing."
Mr. President Pro Tem, I move to award the bid and the contract for the Summit Gym Floor resurface to Cedar Creek Flooring, 7350 Cedar Creek Road in Dalton, Michigan, 49046, in an amount not to exceed $19,000, with funds to be paid from the account number listed for capital outlay buildings and improvements.
Support.
March of this year, bids were solicited for the resurfacing of the Summit Gym floor. This wood floor and painted lines are original to the building, extremely worn and discolored due to 20-plus years of use and multiple repairs. There is some damaged wood due to the water infiltration issue that has been fixed. This wood will be removed and replaced. Leisure Services is recommending to award the bid to Cedar Creek Flooring, who submitted the lowest qualified bid in the amount of $19,000. Any board comments?
Just, is this in the 2018 budget?
It is. It's actually significantly under budget for what we planned for.
What had you anticipated?
We were, I believe we budgeted $59,000 for this item.
Okay.
So replacement of the whole floor?
Yes.
Unclear to me. Thank you. Looking forward to using it.
These are some of the sections of wood that we have in the gym right now.
That mold?
It's just, it's from water that was coming up underneath the floor, so just kind of decolorized and stained the floor there. We had to cut out a section of it, core some holes to resolve the water issues.
I assume the water issues are fixed now?
Yes. Yes. Had to do with the original construction. There was no drainage put underneath the flooring when it was poured. It was just poured directly onto clay instead of a substrate on there.
Not good.
Not the ideal way to do it, but it is what we have, so that's what we're...
Any other board comments?
Have we found a way to prevent it from happening in the future?
We put in some drainage to try and draw the water out from underneath around the foundation, hopefully to prevent that water from coming in. We're still getting some water coming in through the wall where the hill is built up on the backside of the summit, but we're addressing those areas as they come up. It just kind of seems to be, those come up when there's a driving rain coming at a specific angle, which we have plenty of this summer, so as those spots present themselves, then we're addressing those kind of on a as-needed basis. But the water from under the floor, we've been monitoring it. We had cord holes so we could see underneath and measure how much water is under there, and it's not been an issue since we've put in some of the drainage.
Any other board comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item G10, "Consider Approval of a Bid Award for Rental of Liberty Fest Tents, Tables, and Chairs."
Mr. President Pro Tem, I move to award the bid and to authorize a five-year agreement with an annual opt-out clause for any reason by Canton Township beginning in 2018 for the rental of Liberty Fest Tents, Tables, and Chairs to American Rentals Incorporated, 4901 West Grand River Avenue in Lansing, Michigan, 48906, in an amount not to exceed $19,500 annually, with funds to be paid from the account number listed for Recreation Special Events Rentals.
In April this year, bids were solicited for the rental of tents, tables, and chairs for the Liberty Festival, with options for auto renewals of up to five years with an opt-out clause by Canton Township post-event for each year of the contract. The sole bidder, American Rentals of Lansing, Michigan, has been providing the rental of tents, tables, and chairs to Canton Township and the Liberty Festival for the past 20 years, and has developed a tremendous working relationship as a result. Leisure Services is recommending to award the bid to American Rentals, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $19,500 annually. Any board comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Item G11, "Consider Approval of Bid Award for Rental of Liberty Fest Generators and Light Towers."
Mr. President Pro Tem, I move to award the bid and to authorize a five-year agreement with an annual opt-out clause for any reason by Canton Township beginning in 2018 for the rental of Liberty Fest generators and light towers to Sunbelt Rentals Incorporated at 2341 Deerfield Drive, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29715, in an amount not to exceed $7,500 annually, with funds to be paid from the account number listed for professional and contractual service special events.
Support.
In April this year, bids were solicited for the rental of generators and light towers for the Liberty Festival, with options for auto renewals of up to five years with an opt-out clause by Canton Township post-event for each year of the contract. Two bids were received by Michigan Cat and Sunbelt Rentals, Inc., with Sunbelt Rentals submitting the low bid of $6,755. Both companies are reputable and specified comparable equipment. Leisure Services is recommending the award of the bid to Sunbelt Rentals, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $7,500 annually, with an additional allowance for incidental expenses, i.e. extra fuel costs, service calls, et cetera. Any board discussion?
How does this compare to what we budgeted, and also the tents? I forgot to ask about that.
Both of them are very much in line. American Rental for the tents has been with us for 20-plus years, so we pretty much know what our costs have been. They've held their prices quite steady, so that's right in line, and this is in line with our budget as well.
Steve? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Anne Marie.
I was just wondering, so in your previous one, you had said that most of the costs are covered by participation fees. How much is not covered in every Liberty Fest about approximately? How much do we...
For Liberty Fest, last year, including the public safety expenses without actually doing the transfer, but we account for that within our budget so that we can kind of see what the true representation was, it was about 8% subsidized. So 92% covered the cost with all of the fees.
But that did not include the police coverage, then?
No, that includes it. We don't actually make the transfer to the public safety fund for that, but when we're summarizing all of our expenses for our own purposes, we account for that. If we took out the public safety expenses, then it would have covered all expenses.
That includes the fireworks?
Yes. Includes all expenses... Includes all expenses except for full-time staff that is working year-round to plan for that, with all the direct expenses for that weekend.
Is Sunbelt a local operation, or are they bringing lights from South Carolina?
They are out of...
South Carolina.
That's their parent company, but yes, they're actually a local company because they were actually able, we've used Michigan Cat for the past several years, and because of shorter transportation for Michigan Cat, that's where they were actually able to beat the prices for Michigan Cat.
Okay, yeah. Because I was gonna say, if they're coming from South Carolina, they're not making much money, so...
No, they would not be.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, item G 12, consider approval of bid award for tennis and basketball courts replacement and budget amendment.
Mr. President, pro tem, I move to award the bid and the contract for tennis and basketball courts replacement with T&amp;M Asphalt, 4755 Old Plank Road, Milford, Michigan, 48381, in the amount of $232,128. Funds will be paid from the account number listed in the amount of...
Michael, are you reading the right one?
I started with motion two.
Oh, okay, sorry, thank you.
I figure it's probably more appropriate, well, I haven't finished, but in the amount of $232,128, I figured before we make the budget amendment, we should probably authorize the expense. It just seemed, from a logical standpoint... I'm sorry, with motion two, sorry. I don't know if we have support. I threw everyone off there. I apologize.
You said we do have some...
Diane, sounds like she supports.
In 2017, Leisure Services applied to utilize Wayne County Park Milage Funds for replacement of tennis and basketball courts at Floden Park. Wayne County awarded $117,697 for this project. Funds in the amount of $4,760 have already been used for engineering consulting services on this project. In March of this year, bids were solicited for the replacement of the tennis and basketball courts at Floden Park. T&amp;M Asphalt submitted the lowest qualified bid in the amount of $188,222. That bid came in over the amount allocated by Wayne County. Upon further consideration, staff has determined that there is a significant need to two additional basketball courts to the existing scope of the work. One is located at Griffin Park, and the other is at Freedom Park. Conversations with T&amp;M Asphalt has resulted in the contractor agreeing to add these two courts to the project for an additional $43,906. With that project amendment, the new total for this work is $232,128, of which $112,937 is covered by the balance of the Wayne County Funds, and the remaining $119,191 is covered by the general fund. This is offset by deferring the skylight replacement for the Summit Gym budgeted at $120,000. Any board comments?
Yeah, from what I remember, when we did our, we went to Floden Park, the supervisor, yourself and myself. I thought, was under the impression we were just doing the tennis courts? I didn't know we were going to be doing basketball courts as well.
The original, the proposal was to do tennis and basketball.
Okay. And the original was to do both? And then there were two other?
The addition is the basketball court at Floden, or Freedom and Griffin.
Okay. Which are not covered by the grant.
Correct.
And they weren't in the budget, from what I can see.
That's correct.
But it looks like we're offsetting another project from the summit, right?
Correct.
Okay.
We're deferring the skylights. The original intent was to replace the skylights at the same time as the floor, but after talking with the flooring contractor, there was a significant concern about dust and debris from the skylights, so we would have to do one, and then the next, which would require a longer shutdown of the gym, which would just disrupt our members for too long, so we need to defer that project anyways. That was a project that we had on our scope because of leaks and damage to that. We've done some patching on that in previous years. That is holding up. We are not experiencing any water issues or any issues with those at this time, so we feel comfortable deferring those projects to 2019 or beyond.
Do you know what the cost of that skylight project is going to be?
$120,000 is what we had budgeted.
Well, I've got a little bit of concern because we're deferring a budgeted expense into another year, but we're spending that money on an unbudgeted expense. So we're going to have to figure out where to find the $120,000 in next year's budget, if I'm not mistaken, for the skylights.
Yes.
Maybe not, but the skylights still hold up.
We may be able to defer those further, but at some point, those skylights will need to be replaced.
And are they going to be on our capital impro, our CIP, our capital improvement plan?
Yes.
Right.
So the intent was, after speaking with the contractor and looking at the other basketball courts, we're able, since they're already on-site, to be able to use the lower unit price. We talked to them about if we were to just mobilize for one of the courts, say if we just did Griffin Park next year, it would probably be 20 to 30% higher cost because of the mobilization of, for just a smaller project, so we're able to save on those costs by already being out there. And I do have, if there's any interest of pictures of the courts from the different parks, if you want to see those.
Were those other courts on the other parks on your to-do list?
Yes, they were not.
But not necessarily for this year or next year?
Correct.
How did you determine that courts were needed at those parks?
Just visual inspection. So they're, they currently exist. This is just a replacement of those because of trip hazards and cracks in the courts.
The ones at Freedom and Griffith? Those aren't new courts?
Yes. Oh, Freedom, these are the courts at Freedom Park. I was, this is from this afternoon.
Okay, so, oh, so you already have them at Griffin and Freedom also?
Correct.
So now you're doing four parks, then?
No.
Four tennis courts.
One, the tennis courts at Floden, as well as the basketball court at Floden, and then the additional two that weren't originally planned were the basketball court at Freedom and the basketball court at Griffin.
Planned for this year?
Correct. This will basically take care of all of our hard-surface courts, because we redid the Freedom Park tennis courts as pickleballs last year. The prior year, we did the Griffin Park tennis courts. This would replace the remaining tennis courts, as well as all of the basketball courts.
A way to treat those, to make them last longer, cover them during the winter or something? Because they aren't used during the winter, correct?
They are off and on. Just if there's a sunny day and they're not snow-covered, kids are out there playing. Tennis courts, no. Realistically, the best treatment is to continually do crack sealing and seal coating and restriping the courts on a regular basis, which historically hasn't been done, but that will be part of our new pavement program that we re, we authorized earlier this evening.
That will take care of tennis courts and basketball courts?
Yeah, that'll be all of our paved hard surfaces, so it would be tennis courts, basketball courts, parking lots, roadways, all of our hard surfaces that we maintain would be covered with those maintenance dollars. So we would have a regular, we would come back in a couple of years and do any seal coating or crack filling that needed to be done so that we can prolong the life.
I just, briefly, you know, I'm going to be voting against this tonight, and I just want to caution this board, you know, we're going to the voters at some point, we're going to start talking about whether or not we want them to invest, or whether or not we, as a community, want to invest in roads and some of our infrastructure issues. We don't know what the community is going to do. We don't know if they're going to approve a local roads program, but $120,000 that, you know, we're deferring an expense of $120,000 into our, into next year's budget, and it's not budgeted for, and I have heartburn about, one, the capital improvement projects that are out there, that we don't necessarily know what's out there, and how much of our capital that we have now needs to be fixed. And then we also don't know if we're going to have additional revenue to tackle the roads program, and I would caution the board to be very strategic about how it spends unbudgeted money.
Can I just make a quick comment? And I understand what you're saying, Michael. The funding that Wayne County would give towards these projects, we could still use those dollars?
Absolutely.
Because my big thing is, you know, my kids always like to go to the park and use the basketball courts and the tennis courts. You don't have to be a member of the summit to use those. To me, you know, making sure that our parks are usable are important, but I understand, you know, we are going to be asking voters a question on the road, so I understand where you're coming from. And that skylight, does that have to be replaced? Is that something that if they don't do something the next few years, that's going to damage the, is it in the pool, or where exactly? It's in the...
Over the gym.
I mean...
Replacing the flooring.
It does have to be replaced, or the flooring will get ruined?
If there's water coming through, yes.
Steve?
The two other additional courts for 439, was there some cost savings for doing them now versus waiting?
If we were, if we were going to do just one of those courts at a time, it'd probably be a 20, 25%, maybe as much as 30%.
But because they're here...
Right.
In our community, they gave us a discount off of it?
Right, since they're already mobilized, they're already, their equipment's already here, so they would just go from one site to the next and...
Looking at the conditions of these courts, we were going to have to do it at some point in the next couple of years, it seems to me. So I'm comfortable with it. I understand the clerks' concerns. Always want to make sure we're spending the money in the right place in our community and what's important, but I think we probably got some kind of cost advantage by doing them all at once, so I'll vote for it.
Also a concern, too, I mean, that's a large crack of trip hazards, is that correct, that we'd be liable for if somebody got hurt?
Yeah, at some point, if we don't replace them in the next couple of seasons, we'll probably need to close the courts right now. For example, the Floden Park tennis courts are closed because of those cracks there that they're not.
The hazard?
Yes.
Now, this, so this, which, this is the Griffin Park one that you're talking about?
Yeah, so this is the Griffin Park one here. So you can see the depth of the crack there. Freedom Park is here. Floden Basketball Courts here.
That's the one that's closed?
The basketball courts are not closed right now, the tennis court is. So this is just the basketball court here. See some of the larger cracks there, heaving. And then the tennis courts, so this is more pictures of Griffin, the original project. So this is the tennis court here on the left, basketball hoop on the right, and then other pictures of the tennis courts down here. Sorry.
Yeah, the tennis court's closed because of that crack, those cracks?
Yes. Yeah, there's actually some heaving of those cracks as well, so it becomes a trip hazard. Last year, yeah, last year, we went out and did the crack filling of those, but you can see, obviously, that did not, because of the depth and width of those cracks, it did not hold up there. So that's why we intended to apply to Wayne County to get the funding for this project.
The other board comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Correct. Mr. President, pro tem, I move that the board approve the following budget amendments, a decrease in the transfer in general to, of $119,191, and a decrease in community center capital outlay building improvement for $119,191, professional and contractual services account for $15,000, and then transfer out community center for $119,191, and an increase in parks capital outlay land improvements of $134,191.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to agenda item G 13, consider the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 30 of the Canton Code of Ordinances. We've got two motions on this one.
Mr. President, pro tem, I move to introduce the, for first reading, an ordinance which amends Chapter 30, Section 3-355 of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
The board is being asked to consider amending the township's false alarm ordinance, which imposes a fine on repeated public safety runs to respond to security alarms that turn out to not have been an actual emergency. Several years ago, the township revised its false alarm ordinance to address repeated unnecessary runs to businesses in the community who failed to address malfunctions with their security alarm systems. After several years of applying the changes, the Treasury's office has requested amendments to change the timing of the due date of fines and the process for collecting delinquent fines to be more in line with the process for collecting of delinquent real estate property taxes. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, you've got two amendments, two motions.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, pro tem, I further move to table for consideration the proposed text amendment to the Code of Ordinances and to schedule a second reading for May 22, 2018.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item G 14, consider first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 38 of the Canton Code of Ordinances entitled Fire Prevention and Protection to Adopt the 2015 International Fire Code Revision, or Version.
Mr. President, pro tem, I move to introduce for first reading an ordinance which amends Chapter 38 of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
Support.
Board is being asked to consider an amendment to the Township Code of Ordinances to adopt the most recent revision, 2015, version 2015 of the International Fire Code. As with all the various building codes, the International Fire Code is updated periodically. The township must amend its ordinances to adopt the revised codes. Currently, Canton follows the 2000 Fire Code, and the Fire Marshal has indicated that the 2015 version should be adopted to recognize current building standards. Any board comments? All in favor, we got two motions? Oh, I'm sorry, Steve.
Director Meyer? Are there any significant changes you want to mention, and is there any cost for us to implement this updated code?
There is no cost to update the code. The changes really are being consistent with the new Michigan Building Code, so because we are operating under the 2000 Fire Code, there were inconsistencies between the Fire Code and the 2015 Michigan Building Code. That was a priority for Fire Marshal Oatman when he took his position a couple of years ago, was to go through that entire book, which is quite lengthy, and see the impacts, see the changes, because we can also, we don't have to adopt the code in whole, we can, we can make changes to it when we adopt it, but looking at it, it's very consistent with the 2015 Michigan Building Code.
And he doesn't need any new equipment or anything to make sure that buildings are built under this new code or anything?
No, it's just applying those codes to the fire inspections and the plan reviews that we currently do.
Thank you.
I can just, there is an $1,800 expense for the change to the ordinance, which will be hitting the clerk's office. Just want to put that out there, so this is not free, but...
It's not about you, Michael.
So I noticed the big, a big change here was the fire hydrant section taken out. Is that because it's covered elsewhere, or what would have changed about the fire hydrant section?
The, under the 2015... The, under the 2015, it's already addressed. So in the 2000 Building Code, it was, it was, we basically made that section more strict than what the 2000 Fire Code did. So the new update makes it compliant with what we're already doing.
Board comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. You have to, another motion?
I, Mr. President Pro, Mr. President Protam, I further move to table, wait.
Yep.
Okay. I further move to table for consideration the proposed text amendment to the Code of Ordinances and to schedule a second reading for May 22, 2018.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 15. Consider first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 46, Article 7, Division 1 of the Canton Code of Ordinances entitled Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions to Revise Section 46-505 and 46-506.
Mr. President Protam, I move to introduce for first reading an ordinance which amends Chapter 46, Article 7 of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
You were too late.
Fighting down there. Board is being asked to consider an amendment to the township's ordinance prohibiting minors from possessing alcohol products to include e-cigarettes, vapor products, and alternative nicotine products. Currently, state law does not have a minimum age to purchase or possess vapor products as it does with tobacco-based products. Public Safety has requested that Canton amend its ordinance prohibiting minors from possessing cigarettes with tobacco products to include e-cigarettes, vapor products, and nicotine alternatives. In particular, the school resource officers who are assigned to the three public high schools have requested a tool to deal with students found to be in possession of such items. Like possession of tobacco, a violation would be a misdemeanor with a $50 fine for a first offense. Any board comments?
I just want to thank you very much as a respiratory therapist for doing this, because I don't think children and adults realize the danger of e-cigarettes. So thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say thank you also. I have a son who is in seventh grade, and he told me that this is a problem in the middle schools. And I actually had a conversation with Clerk Segras about this about a month ago, and I said, "We need to do something." So I'm happy that this is on our agenda. I do have a question about the penalties, though. I looked, and it said that for violation, you would have to go volunteer possibly at a hospice. Are there any restrictions on doing that based on age of the person that is committing the offense?
I'm going to defer that to Deputy Chief Wiltshire. He was instrumental in writing this ordinance for us. But to echo what you said about the middle schools, it is, it is quite prevalent, not only in the high schools, but also in the middle schools. And I know that our school resource officers, along with Officer Esselink, have been hitting the schools, talking, talking to the students. And we've also been working with the district to try to address this. It is a growing problem, and that's, that's why we're here tonight to address the ordinance. But D.C. Wiltshire, if you want to address that, our question?
Ultimately, be up to the judge to set that, that penalty for the offense offender.
I have a, oh, Deputy Chief, would you stay up?
You're not done yet.
Don't run away just yet.
Go ahead first.
You sure? Thank you. I, I noticed it says containing nicotine or not in a number of sections. So how does that, how does that work? So we're treating it as a tobacco product, even if perhaps it's, it's a non-nicotine product?
Non-nicotine product, we will do a field test to determine whether it is a THC-based product or not.
Oh, okay.
No way to really, with a marijuana cigarette, you can tell by odor of, that it's a marijuana cigarette. With the actual THC liquids, you can't tell. There is no odor that goes along with it. So that would have to be done with a, an actual field test, and then sent to the MSP crime lab in order to confirm that at a later date.
Okay. Now, I apologize for my ignorance, because I came of age before vaping became a craze for the kids. But, so there's a nicotine substance, clearly there's some type of marijuana-based substance that the kids would put in there as well. Is there another, like, any type of other, like, an herbal alternative that they might be vaping, if you will? And how would that be treated under this ordinance?
As far as it's a non-tobac, it would be considered a non-tobacco product. But the, the actual vaping instrument would still be prohibited under the ordinance.
So I, yeah, thank you also, but I've had many conversations with my kids who are teenagers, because this is also happening in the buses in the back. And, and the kids are, I've had many conversations with them about that, yes, there is a problem with doing this. They're like, "Oh, there's no prob," for some reason, they don't think it. But in terms of us, how are we, is there precedence in Michigan of other districts doing this? Since the state does not prohibit this, how, how are we covered? I mean, in terms of, can parents come back and say, "Hey, my, you're charging my kid $50 fine," or whatever. In other words, the parent's being paid the fine, but the state allows it, you know, so therefore, I don't believe you can do this. I mean, is there, are there other cities and towns doing this in schools?
Not that I'm aware of. Most of it is their school consequences that go along with the possession of vaping type products. As far as other local ordinance, I don't know of any at this point in time.
So we don't, have we passed this by our legal counsel at all, in terms of?
Yes. Yes, we have. Actually, she was instrumental in actually authoring the amendment.
So now, when the dogs, I know the dogs go into this high school a lot and do searches. I know that happens. Would they be able to sniff this out also, this type of product, and like they do for drugs right now?
That I'm not, that I'm not sure on that. As far as the TH oil, if they're able to, to smell that. I imagine they are, but I've never, I've never witnessed it.
This would include on the buses, then, also, correct? Okay. Because I know that there's also film, they, they take video on the buses. And so if, if teachers are the, would the SRO watch those videos? Is that, do they ever watch those at all?
Usually, the only time they watch them is when a crime is, is brought to their attention, or some type of incident on a bus is brought to their attention. They don't actively review those videos. It's, it's when an incident is brought to their attention, and they, they go to review them.
Thanks.
Any other board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. You have another motion?
I further move to table for consideration the proposed text amendment to the Code of Ordinances and to schedule a second reading for May 22, 2018.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion pass. Item G16. Consider request to issue purchase order for patrol vehicle conversion parts.
Mr. President Protam, I move to approve a purchase order to Cruisers in Howell, Michigan for patrol vehicle conversion parts in an amount not to exceed $28,000.
Public Safety is requesting a purchase order be issued to Cruisers in Howell, Michigan for an amount not to exceed $28,000 to convert four new Explorer vehicles from factory status to, to patrol-ready vehicle. Cruisers is the vendor utilized by Fleet Services for all conversion equipment, and is being requested for this purchase to maintain consistency and continuity within Canton's fleet of patrol vehicles. Any board questions?
Do we usually have to approve this after we purchase them? It's not included in the normal? I don't remember ever doing this.
No, typically, typically when a patrol vehicle's taken out of service, the equipment, unless we change model years like we did when we went to the, from the Crown Vics to the Torres and Explorers. But now going forward, typically, when we take a vehicle out of service, that equipment would come off of that vehicle and go on to the new vehicle, unless it was damaged. In this particular case, the board recently approved four new patrol vehicles to, in addition to the fleet. And that's to put more patrol vehicles on the road. When we did that, I had conversation with Clark, and I misunderstood, it was my mistake, I misunderstood Clark that we had additional equipment in stock. What we had were light bars and emergency lights. What we didn't have were push bumpers, dividers for the vehicle, and then the, the seats that go in the back. And so this is just in addition to get those four vehicles equipped and on the road.
Great, thanks.
Any other board comment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion, we have a second motion?
Additionally, I move to approve the listed amendment to the 2018 police budget to accommodate this expense.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G17. Consider a request to purchase a wireless intercom/headset system.
Mr. President Protam, I move to approve the purchase and installation of a Setcom Systems 950 vehicle intercom system for 12 vehicles totaling $37,476.50 from ComSource Incorporated in Plymouth, Michigan, 48170.
Fire Department is requesting to purchase a Setcom 950 wireless intercom/headset system to outfit 12 fire vehicles. An invitation to bid was advertised in March with ComSource Inc. out of Plymouth, Michigan submitting the lowest of three bids in the amount of $37,476.50. Any board comments?
I, I have a question. Is this, this is an anticipated expense for the, for the fire capital out, for the fire budget?
Yes. Yes. These are, these were in the budget, and they're in there because of the, the fire apparatus. There's a placard right at the fire truck that says, "Hearing protection shall be worn while the truck's in operation." Years gone past, we've bought earplugs, we've bought things like that. The problem is, you can't hear the radio, and you can't hear the other members of the fire truck. This would allow these actually plug into the radio, so now we can monitor that radio traffic while we're responding, talk to the other people in the fire truck, and protect their hearing.
Any other board comment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. We have a second motion?
Do we?
Nope.
Item G18. Consider request for the purchase of a 3D laser scanner system.
Mr. President Protam, I move to approve the purchase of a Faro Technologies 3D laser scanner system in the amount of $72,043.
Police Department is requesting to purchase a Faro Technologies 3D laser scanner system to perform accurate tracking and 3D rendering of fatal crash and serious injury incidents. This new system to replace the department's outdated and unserviceable measurement capturing total station purchased in 2004. A request for proposal was advertised in March with two proposals for 3D scanner systems being submitted. Faro Technologies was the lowest bidder, quoting a comprehensive system at 72,043. Any board comments?
Can I ask a question? So this is a 3D rendering, so it gives you, could you explain it, the scanner? So you, you use it at the crime, I mean, at the accident, or how does it work?
Well, the current total station is a measurement tool that's used at a, at an accident scene, and it's, it's designed, there's a multitude of ways, but they have to take those measurements. This, as I understand it, and again, Deputy Chief Wiltshire's here, maybe he can elaborate, but as I understand it, we set the, we set the new Faro 3D scanner up on a tripod, and it spins around, and it does the work, and takes the measurements, and then renders that in a 3D image, computerized 3D image of the crime scene. The nice thing about this, it can also be utilized not only at our accident investigations, but it can be, also be utilized at the crime scene. One in particular, this, this unit, the FBI owns one of these units, and it was used at the bank robbery scene. So they set this up inside the bank, they turned it on, it spins around, and it produces a 3D image of the crime scene. And it's actually giving you measurements of evidence, giving you measurements from, from the door to the, to the entrance of the bank, et cetera, et cetera.
In other words, you wouldn't have to spend as much time there, because you've, you've got this recording, and you can take it back and study it.
This would, I believe, expedite our crime scene investigations, yes.
The process of, of actually doing indoor scenes and outdoor scenes, it's, you place the, the device in certain sections within the room, and it takes just several minutes to, to photograph and, and make a 3D image of that area. Then you move it around the room multiple times, where with the, the old system with the, the AI, the accident investigation team used to use, it was more like a survey tool, where they'd have to get the scope, they'd have to go out and take, take the measuring device out, and then make, take multiple measurements, and then bring that and import that into a computer system, and then make their, make their sketches from that. Where this automatically makes the sketch and a 3D image, and also can be utilized in a virtual reality-type atmosphere, where you can actually put somebody into a scene on a 3D level.
You would take it back, you would take the film back here, let's say, and you could put on a headset or whatever, and actually be in the scene, then?
Correct. That's one of the options.
That is evidence that can hold up in court, then, using this machine? And it's used elsewhere? Okay, thanks. Sounds cool.
Thank you. I have a question about the drug forfeiture account. How, so I see that we're using $72,000, just a little over, of, of the cost is, is going to be coming from the drug, police drug forfeiture account. That's a substantial amount of, of money. Do we, does this account, how does revenue come into this account? Is this from our involvement in, like, the Western Wayne County narcotics? Is it just solely drug busts inside of Canton Township? I'm just curious. It's a lot of money.
There's a multitude in which ways the funds, the revenue can come in. It's, it's participation in Western Wayne County. We get forfeiture assets from our participation with the DEA. And so those cases, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Canton case. For DEA purposes, if we, if we, if our task force officer was assigned to that case, we can get a portion of that drug forfeiture. And those are agreements that are set up with the DEA. So it's a multitude of different ways that revenue can come in.
This would be interesting also to see how much we save in resources, too, you know, by doing it this way, rather than spending a day at a crime scene, you're there an hour, and then you take it back and analyze it. That would be, that would be an interesting study, to see the revenue that we save by resources not being at a scene for so long, and being able to get the businesses back up.
Any other board comment? All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. President Protam, I move to approve the below-listed amendment to the 2018 police budget utilizing drug forfeiture funds for this purchase.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aries. Item G19. IT Services Replacement, Replace/Upgrade Network Storage.
Mr. President Protam, I move to approve the reduction of existing purchase order
Majority of township applications and data are stored on the township's existing storage area network. The current sand has been in production for seven years and is no longer adequate for the township's current needs for space performance and reliability. The amount of free space available has been fully allocated and is in use, as several departments are in the beginning stages of accepting and storing more digital data. It is imperative that the IT Services upgrade the existing scan to accommodate the coming need. Additionally, the existing scan has experienced two hardware failures within the past six months, which are indicative of hardware which has been in operation around the clock for the past seven years. IT Services published a request for proposal in April, soliciting vendors for purposes of a scan and networking components upgrade to meet our need. In addition to upgrading our primary stores, the RFP requested, requested an option to purchase, to include a second storage solution to be allocated off-site of the administration data center, and to be configured as to near-real-time backup in the primary storage. A total of five responses were received and have been reviewed by IT Services. Of the five responses received, only one vendor proposal was, was within the budget allocated and met the full specifications of the RFP, which IT Services- and met the full specifications of the RFP which IT Services published. The selected vendor proposal was the second lowest cost of all five responses. The lowest-cost solution proposal was disqualified as a storage area network was not proposed. The total budget for this project, when the budget was created, was $137,800. Eight networks, which is previously budgeted for 2018, are being deferred to 2019 to accommodate this more critical project. IT Services is recommending that the Township Board award the equipment services and contract to access interactive of Novi, Michigan. What the hell's the matter with 3x5 cards?
Punch cards?
What?
Okay, we're going to buy this IT thing. Any board... Oh, I knew he'd say something. Go ahead, Steve. Tell me why 3x5 cards wouldn't work.
Totally would work. We just hire about 1,000 people.
There you go.
Director Trumbull, simple question. Just do you know if an alternative using, somehow using cloud services was looked at for this? And if... I'm still voting for it, but if you don't, I just would be interested in the answer later this week, so...
It's a server that's actually going to house some of the public safety.
So it might be a legal thing?
We make sure it's encrypted appropriately if it's on our site. I know that our IT Service Manager has looked at clouds online, to do clouds versus housing it onsite, and for the most part, his comfort level is onsite because of anything that's going to house any information for public safety needing to be encrypted and making sure it's protected data.
Yep. I'm not sure that it couldn't be done in the cloud that way, but properly encrypted and all that, but I understand. But I would just... If you could just have them send an email on it, but I'm still voting for it, so...
That would include storage... I mean, is that including storage, or is that live active files that you need access to right away?
Storage and files, that's the whole thing.
So could storage be taken off the server and put into archives and still meet the requirement?
It wouldn't be accessible. I'd have to ask our IT manager specific, but this is stuff that we're routinely using, and it's saving and it's storage, so it's stuff that we're routinely accessing. It's not just stuff that people wouldn't have to access.
I did see mention of a backup server, so maybe the backup server...
The backup server, if you recall, years ago, we've been trying to make our DPW building our emergency backup to run in real time. So if something happens to this location, we can be up and running in no time at another location, and there's, under an IT, best practices that's located at least five miles away from our current location. Currently, well, I don't know if it was currently as today or if it's at the fire station right now, but the library was our data backup. So if a tornado comes through...
Pretty close.
Hope it only hits one of us and not the other. Well, hopefully, it hits neither of us. But so we've been trying to get the DPW facility ready to be our backup. So if you recall, we had the fiber project that we did with the schools, and that got the fiber lines dropped between here and DPW, but it costs money to get all the technology we need for it to be a redundant facility. So slowly, we're getting there in order to do that. So this second SAN would help facilitate that as being a backup as well. And when we said we deferred eight of the network switches, we had budgeted 10 of them, and we had to buy two of those because of the phone project that we currently have out for RFP that will be coming up to the board at a future meeting to issue the award or contract for our phone systems. But that impacts the speed that goes between the public safety side of the building and all the floors and whatnot, and IT. We had to buy two switches for that to make sure that project was ready to go for the phone system. So we had 10 budgeted, we had to do two this year. And in 2019, as technology prices are ever-changing, there is a project budgeted in 2019 that was initially costed. It was more expensive than we think it's going to turn out to be next year. So we still think next year, we can get these other switches in within the budget that the board saw last fall.
Is there a way to... What is the amount of years that you keep information? Is it five years, and then you delete it? Or what's it... What are the requirements?
It depends on what information. So there's different data requirements for storage. So we're working right now on some of the plans, for instance, and municipal services, the engineering plan, design plans, those are until the building no longer exists.
About the public safety information, is that a... Is there a set time on average? Because I noticed, like, on the emails, it'll say after five years, delete.
Follow the state retention policy, and that's what guides us for retaining all the different records, various records.
We have some township records that our retention period is forever, so that is, if we do migrate to digital storage, we would need to, one, ensure that we're paid to digitally store that forever, and, two, that we have a migratory process in place. What we can, as technology changes, the form we store it in digitally could change with technology. So that is...
So if something's a PDF today, and PDF goes away, and now it has to be TIFF, then you have to have a process to get everything that was saved in PDF into a TIFF file. So there's, you know, things that we don't know could be, you know, UQT. I don't know, something, just different formats, and if nothing can support the PDF, then we're going to have to figure out how to convert it. So we're working through policy on how to address those items currently, also. You're welcome.
I have a question. Can you walk me through financially? So it said the original budget was $137,800.
Correct.
We are authorizing a PO, well, a reestablishment of a PO for $181,716, and then we are deferring some budgeted switches into next year's budget.
Correct.
My question is the discrepancy between what was originally budgeted. Can you walk me through how this works? Is the $43,916 the difference between those two? Am I right to believe that that's not budgeted?
That's correct. So when everything was priced out, you know, and the budget was adapted two years ago...
Correct.
Some of the components were more expensive than initially anticipated, especially because we're going to do the backup server as well. So this is for the one storage network. It's cheaper for us to buy a second storage network at the same time, so we wanted to try to lump those two together, but the costs were an estimate when it was prepared. Once we actually went out and did the RFP and got all the pieces that were required to actually get it up and running, it cost more. So similarly, in 2019, I'm not sure which project it is, but there is a project budgeted in 2019 that, when it was prepared initially and costed out, it was anticipated to be a certain dollar amount, and the IT manager feels that that project, and I can get you which one that is, I can specifically speak with him. I don't know what it is off the top of my head, that those costs are going to be significantly under, allowing us to buy these eight deferred network switches with those dollars for next year.
That it's going to be the... That'll be offset for next year?
It should be offset next year, and I can get you the specific project that he was referring to. I did ask him how we were going to work this into next year's budget without having to do a budget adjustment, and he said there was a project that was budgeted already in 2019 that, based on some cost estimates he's doing today, is coming in less than what he initially thought it was going to be when the budget came to the board back this fall for 2019.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have two motions.
Mr. President Protam, I further move to create a new purchase order to access interactive of Novi, Michigan in the amount of $181,716 to cover the cost of equipment and implementation assistance of their proposed storage area network upgrade.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That concludes the agenda for this evening. Are there any additional public comments? Seeing none, any additional board comments?
I just want to say Happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there, and hopefully, everybody has a good Mother's Day on this coming Sunday. It's going to be nice and sunny.
Oh, moms.
Aye.
That concludes the business. I want to thank the board for your patience, except for Steve, who is becoming a little intolerable.
I have a critique.
Put that in the minutes, that Steve's nightmare was a little bit of a pain in the dupa.
I'll be submitting a critique formally and to be put in the minutes next session.
Oh, don't forget, it is Bike Week, National Bike Week, starting Monday, right?
National Bike Week. Everybody get on a bike and ride down I-275, please.
If I may briefly...
Trail, not the highway.
The highway.
If I may briefly, the gentleman who spoke during public comments talked about the relief and his frustration with Wayne County and the potholes, and I've heard a lot of complaints over the last season about potholes in general. In August, there will be a ballot measure where the residents of Canton Township will have to ask themselves if they want to implement a roads program, and I believe one component of that would be the increased or assistance for maintenance also, perhaps our ability to perform some of that maintenance as well, and that will be worked out. But somebody had asked what the potential solutions might be. We currently do not have any jurisdiction over the roads. We currently do not appropriate any funds for the roads, given our budget as it is today. So we are stuck with Wayne County and their Act 51 revenues. However, in August, the township will have an opportunity to decide if they would like to give that infusion and to increase the service level.
Any other board comments? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.